If you haven't already done so, you may want to silence your cell phones. Good morning. I'd like to call the February 18th meeting of the City of Punta Gorda City Council to order. We will stand for our invocation and Pledge of Allegiance.
Dear Father in heaven, we ask that you bless our meeting today and uplift our thoughts so that we may communicate with each other with a deep understanding of the needs of those we serve. We give grateful thanks for the friendship this association offers us and the inspiration we receive from each other. Let respect for others and their ideas to our standard. May thy grace be with the council and their appointed staff and guide them in fulfillment of their duties and decisions. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please let the record reflect that all city council members and city officials are present. We have this morning two proclamations. There's only one listed on your agenda, but we have two. And the first one is United States Navy Day, which I will read. Proclamation, City of Punta Gorda, Florida. Whereas since its creation, the United States Navy has played a vital role in the defense of America. And whereas the United States Navy Band represents the Navy and fosters the preservation of music by performing at government and military functions, as well as for the enjoyment of civilians of this nation. And whereas the United States Navy Band from Washington DC will be performing in concert at the Charlotte Harbor Event and Conference Center on March 3rd, 2015 at 7:00 PM. Now therefore, the City Council of the City of Punta Gorda, Florida does hereby proclaim March 3rd, 2015 as United States Navy Day throughout the City of Punta Gorda and urges all citizens to attend the performance by this outstanding organization. Passed and duly adopted in regular session this 18th day of February 2015, City of Punta Gorda, Carolyn Freeland, Mayor, and accepting is Charles Brox, who is President of the Charlotte Harbor Chapter Military Officers Association of America. Would you like to say a few words?
Yeah.
Please at the podium.
Oh, the microphone. I'm a little gun-shocked, but I'll try.
Not you, Charlie.
I want to thank you very much for the support. And I'm Colonel, Colonel, yes, I was. Charles Brox, President of the local chapter, and I'm very pleased to be here and I appreciate the support. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Charlie.
For those of you who don't know, Charlie does a lot of training of city staff and other local businesses and governmental agencies at the FGCU Herald Court Center in supervisory and teamwork. And he's been doing that for years for us.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Our second proclamation is to recognize the Military Museum's 2015 Wall of Warriors Honorees. And Councilmember Tom Cavanaugh will read the proclamation.
It is indeed an honor. Whereas Major General Richard Eugene Carr was commissioned in the Air Force in 1959, and his 35-year career included flying hundreds of hours and missions in a U-17, single-engine spotter plane, and F-4 fighter jets in the Vietnam War, as well as commands at various levels stateside and in Japan, Korea, and Germany. And whereas General Carr's many awards include two Defense Distinguished Service Medals, Distinguished Service Medal, Defense Superior Service Medal, two Legion of Merit Medals, Distinguished Flying Cross, Meritorious Service Medal, and 12 Air Medals. And whereas Captain Jean Chute Carr served for six years as a flight nurse stateside and in Bermuda. And whereas General Carr remains active in the veterans' community and currently serves as Chair of the Vietnam Wall of Southwest Florida Committee and as President of Southwest Florida Air Force Academy Chapter. And Captain Carr is also active in the veterans' community, serving as Treasurer of the Charlotte County Veterans Council and volunteering with the Charlotte County Vet Van. And whereas General and Captain Carr are the Military Heritage Museum's Wall of Warriors 2015 honorees, now therefore, the City Council of the City of Punta Gorda, Florida does hereby proclaim February 18, 2015, as General Eugene Carr and Captain Jean Carr Day. Passed and duly adopted, regular session this 18th day of February 2015, City of Punta Gorda, Florida, Carolyn Freeland, Mayor. General and Captain Carr.
I am really honored. Thank you very much. Even more than that, I want to thank you, members of the council and the staff of Punta Gorda, for your very strong support of what Kim and I like to call the bookends of the downtown Punta Gorda, the Military Heritage Museum, and our hopefully soon-to-be-dedicated Southwest Florida Vietnam Wall and Lashley Park. Thank you very much for this honor.
Thank you. And today we have two presentations. Howard?
The first one, we'll start with the 15-year service award. That goes to, well, it says here, John Smith, Building Plans Examiner and Inspector. It's really Smitty. Smitty, come on up. This is a historic occasion. Before our building official Randy Cole talks, it must be cold because Smitty has long pants on.
John Smith, AKA Smitty.
Congratulations.
He started his career here as a building inspector 15 years ago.
Congratulations.
He then became licensed as a plans examiner and later became certified as a fire safety inspector at the Cal State Fire College. He's been married to his wife Lisa for 35 years this March, has three sons, two of whom are graduates of Florida State, and his third son is currently attending Florida State University. He's been a great asset to the city and focuses on working through any permitting issues while maintaining good customer service. Thank you, Smitty.
Thank you.
Smitty, you don't want to say anything?
Would I say something?
Sure.
I just want to thank everybody. You know, in today's times, you know, we're fortunate to have work. And thankfully, the economy has turned around. The building department's doing well again. We're off that four days a week. But it's even more fortunate that someone can have work and enjoy what they do every day. I enjoy helping the people of this community and look forward to continuing to do so. And I'll see you at 20.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Now, the next is a 20 Years of Service Award. And actually, it goes to somebody who sometimes refer to it. I know it's a city council meeting. Sometimes it turns out to be the Terry Tubbs meeting. Terry, come on up.
I think I'd like everybody to listen to this work history. It's very unique. Terry is very much a climber, a go-getter. Terry started as a temporary receptionist for planning and zoning in 1994. She moved from the temporary receptionist for planning and zoning into the administrative secretary and office manager of the zoning, co-compliance, and building divisions. From that, she became the co-compliance secretary. And from that, she became a certified co-compliance officer. Now, you got to understand, when she reached that level, what she was, the way she learned was through a classical operation of Dan Douglas. That's if you remember Dan. No frills. He dropped the book on her desk and he says, "If you're going to do this, you're going to read this, you're going to go out after you've got this memorized." She did it. Boom. After that, she became a zoning technician. And at that point, we threw a curveball at her and we adopted a brand-new code. She got a second one to go through and have to learn. After that, she became the zoning coordinator, the zoning manager, and now the zoning official. And you just can't say enough about her. One thing about Terry, and Terry, I'm going to have you come over here and grab these from me. Terry has a level of dedication that is, that's unbelievable. She couldn't go out to lunch, she couldn't take breaks, without driving around town and seeing violations. She had a pad and a pen. Addresses everywhere. We made her a pair of glasses that she now has to wear on the streets. Everything is unicorns and rainbows, and we love her to death. Can't live without her. Terry, thank you very much.
Thank you, Terry.
I couldn't have done this without all of the support help I've had. Dan was a lot of fun, taught me a lot, and I really appreciate that. I appreciate the staff that I work with. Everybody is wonderful. I hope, as I continue my journey, that I can continue to help the citizens and make a difference in the city.
Thank you, Terry. Thank you so much. All right. At this time, if there are, is anyone that would like to introduce themselves who has been nominated or wishes to be nominated for a board or committee position? Please come forward at this time. We're losing our audience.
I know.
Again, is there anyone that would like to introduce themselves that's going, that has been nominated for a position? Okay, we will move on. And we have a couple of public hearings. The first is CP 0115.
Yes, this is the first reading of an ordinance, which I'll read by title only. An ordinance of the City of Punta Gorda, Florida, amending the City of Punta Gorda Comprehensive Plan 2025 by adding a new Section 11 to be titled Historic Element and renumbering succeeding sections accordingly, updating the table of contents, introduction, acronyms, definitions, maps, and references, providing for conflict and severability, and providing an effective date.
Good morning. For the record, Joan LeBeau, Urban Design. And the Historic Element is finally completed after three years. We are thrilled. For the past three years, the city has worked in concert with its citizens on the development of this element for inclusion in the comp plan. Urban Design actively sought out individuals from, and groups, organizations, and agencies that are involved with or otherwise vested in the concept of historic preservation. Many individuals have stepped forward to assist us in this endeavor. Longtime residents of the area with a passion for its history, research, and historic preservation, groups such as the Historical Preservation Advisory Board, organizations such as the Punta Gorda Historical Society and the Charlotte County Historical Society, educational institutions such as the Florida Gulf Coast University have offered invaluable insight into what is needed to grow and what we want to see as the community of citizens mindful of its historic roots. We also made contact with the Builders Association to make sure that they were okay with the policies that we had placed in the element. One of the institutions that was first involved was FGCU. And we were introduced to Lori Coventry Payne by Bucky McQueen. And she is a citizen of Charlotte County, and at the time, she was adjunct professor at FGCU. She agreed to work with us on this project, thinking it would only be a year. And her students were also involved and provided some information on the younger perspective of what they would like to see preserved in our city. So with that, after she moved on from that position, she continued to work with us on the project as a private citizen because she believes that this element will bring good things to the city. She believes not only that does the knowledge of common history bring people together, but also the celebration of our cultural heritage, and also the celebration, and she, but also the celebration of our cultural heritage that will bring great economic advantages to the city. In her words, "We want to build a community that is respectful of the past, in sync with the present, and increase its value in the future." This element was brought, was well-received at both the Historic Preservation Advisory Board and the Planning Commission meetings, and both recommended of approval of this element into the comp plan with one addition. That addition was added. It is included in your packet. Since then, we have received several other small changes, spelling, capitalization, and the correction of a name. Punta Gorda Historic Center is really the Punta Gorda History Center. So that, those corrections will be made prior to the transmittal to DEO. With that, staff recommends approval of the ordinance and the transmittal to DEO with those changes from Councilmember Crafty.
Any other comments or questions? Yes?
I'm just thrilled that this has reached this point. I know that when you started working on this, you talked to me about this years ago. And one of the things that's so special about Punta Gorda is our history. And it is, it provides the character of this community. And so this is a step in the right direction to help preserve that history and preserve the historic character of this community that brings people here and is, makes us so unique. I'm also very glad to see that this helps formalize relationships with these organizations that we've had informal relationships before. So it's awesome. And thank you for all the hard work. I know there's a lot, there are a lot in the policies, goals, objectives, and policies. There's a lot there. So I hope we can get lots of people to help us with that. And hoping that it helps the Punta Gorda Historic Preservation Committee have more purpose in helping fulfill those.
Thank you, Nancy. Tom?
Yes, I just want to say that you and all of those who worked on the plan have done a wonderful, wonderful job and need to be recognized for it. I don't know how many other communities have a historical element in their comp plan, but I think it's wonderful that Punta Gorda has one. Thanks.
Thank you, Joan. Any other comments? All right, this is a public hearing. Does anyone wish to speak regarding CP 0115? Again, it's a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak? Last call?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Is there any other comments? Move approval? Okay.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve CP 0115.
With those additional terms.
With the additions. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We move now to GA 0215.
Yes, this is a first reading of an ordinance, which I'll read by title only. An ordinance of the City of Punta Gorda, Florida, amending the Punta Gorda Code, Chapter 9A, Code Enforcement, Article Roman numeral 2, Code Enforcement Board, Section 9A-4, Appointment, Term, Qualifications, Composition, Organization, Paragraph G, excuse me, C, revising the term of appointment for Code Enforcement Board members, providing for conflict and severability, and providing an effective date.
This item came before us, before, we talked about it, and this ordinance makes the change from the one three-year term to three three-year terms.
And this makes it consistent, then, with our other committees and boards? Any questions? Comments? Nope. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on GA 0215? This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak? Last call?
Move to close public hearing.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Move approval, GA 0215.
It's been, it's been moved and seconded to approve GA 0215. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, moving on. All right, we now have a quasi-judicial public hearing. SE 0115.
Yes, this is a special exception request by Heather Ramos of Gray Robinson. As agent for KRG Burnt Store LLC and Publix Supermarkets, Inc., pursuant to Chapter 26, Section 16.8, Punta Gorda Code, to allow a packaged liquor store to be located at 3941 Tamiami Trail, Unit 3151, Punta Gorda, Florida, which is zoned highway commercial. As such, use requires special exception approval pursuant to Chapter 26, Section 3.10F2, Punta Gorda Code. As a quasi-judicial public hearing, anyone who will be providing testimony or evidence during this hearing needs to rise and be sworn by the City Court at this time, please.
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
And when you come to the podium to testify, please state your full name and indicate you've been sworn.
Okay, this is, go ahead, Terry.
For the record, Terry Tubbs, zoning official, and I have been sworn. We did receive the request for the special exception as is required for a packaged store in the Highway Commercial Zoning District. It is located in the existing shopping center, right next to the Publix at the Burnt Store Plaza. The Planning Commission and city staff do recommend approval of the request.
Okay. Questions?
Nope.
Any comments? Okay, we don't need to have anyone speak to this, do we, in terms of, we give an opportunity?
Well, I think the applicant may have a few words to say, and we should allow that opportunity.
Sure.
Good morning. I'm Heather Ramos, 301 East Pine Street, Orlando, Florida, with Gray Robinson. And I would like to thank Terry. She's been great through this process. And Publix will own and operate the liquor store in the way that you are accustomed to seeing them operate their supermarket. And I can answer any questions if you have them.
Any questions?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Move approval. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve SE 0115. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so that has passed. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's amazing how quickly a liquor store gets approved.
I was thinking the same thing.
For example.
I live down there. I was told to not say anything.
Okay, we have two ordinances. And we will have citizen comments on the, either of these items. GA 0115, which focuses on our land development regulations, regulating districts, neighborhood residential district development standards. To clarify the minimum and maximum setback requirements for the properties with more than two street frontages. And the second is on also land development regulations, amending our regulating districts to provide for a definition and providing an allowance for pergolas with adjustable louvers that can be closed to form a louvered roof. Anyone wishing to, there's no public hearing on these, but these are citizens' comments at this time. Okay, we'll move on then. GA 0115.
Yes, this is the second reading of an ordinance, which I'll read by title only. An ordinance of the City of Punta Gorda, Florida, amending Chapter 26, Punta Gorda Code, known as the Land Development Regulations, amending Article 3, Regulating Districts, Section 3.7, NR Neighborhood Residential District, Subsection G, Development Standards, Paragraph 2, to clarify the minimum and maximum setback requirements for properties with more than two street frontages, providing for conflict and severability, and providing an effective date.
And this is the second reading. Are there any questions or comments on this one?
Move approval.
Second.
GA 0115.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve GA 0115. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Moving on to GA 0215.
This is the second reading of an ordinance, which I'll read by title only. An ordinance of the City of Punta Gorda, Florida, amending Chapter 26, Punta Gorda Code, known as the Land Development Regulations, amending Article 3, Regulating Districts, Section 3.13, SRO, Special Residential Overlay District, Subsection D, Setbacks, Providing for Definition, Providing an Allowance for Pergolas with Adjustable Louvers that can be closed to form a louvered roof, Providing for Definition of the term Roof Over to clarify the difference between a pergola with a louvered roof and a roof over, Providing for Conflict and Severability, and Providing an Effective Date. I would note that this ordinance has been modified pursuant to the direction of the City Council at its first reading.
Any questions? Yes, Tom?
I just, I intend to vote no on this ordinance. And once again, I'd like to express my concern that a pergola with the ability to close over the roof has the potential of becoming a structure similar to a carport in a backyard. I know we have adopted a prohibition against storage, but I believe that kind of prohibition is basically unenforceable. That's my concern about it.
Okay, any other comments?
Move approval, GA 0215.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve, GA 0215. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, it does pass four to one. We'll now move on to our consent agenda. And again, citizens' comments may be made at this time on our consent agenda items with regards to our minutes, our legal services, as well as from our Police Department, resolutions approving a memorandum of understanding between our Police Department and the Pinellas County Sheriff's Office for access to Florida's Facial Recognition Network. And also memorandum of understanding for our Charlotte County Sexual Assault Response Team. Any citizens' comments on either of these? Any of these? Move approval.
Oh, I just wanted to make-
Nancy, did you want to, did you want to pull anything?
I didn't want to pull anything. I just wanted to make a comment in regard to Item D2 of the Police Department on the Sexual Assault Response Team and congratulate our Police Department on hosting the first Sexual Response Assault Team Breakfast Meeting. It was a wonderful event. I went, not representing the City Council, but I'm a member of the Board of Directors of Care. And so, but was pleased to be there. As a City Council member as well. And it was a great event. And there's a lot of wonderful people and organizations in this community that are working very hard on advancing how victims of sexual assaults are handled here. So it was great.
I would also just like to, again, congratulate our Police Department for moving forward on the Facial Recognition Network with the Pinellas County Sheriff's Office. Again, this is, I think, an opportunity, again, for us to move our Police Department even further and higher. Pinellas is a, is the point of contact for the facial recognition. Yes, Nancy?
I forgot to mention PGFD as well was well-represented at the Sexual Assault Breakfast, and are participating partners in this effort too. So, thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, we have a consent agenda.
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Now we have citizen comments on our regular agenda items, our unfinished business with our CMR agreement with Wharton Smith for construction of our RO plant. We also have our award for designing services for our 41-southbound underpass. Design options for Harbor Walk West, our revisions to the mineral resource extraction for future land use designation, Charlotte County's revisions. And I believe that is it. Do we have any comments? Yes, ma'am?
Good morning. Jennifer Hecker, on behalf of the Conservancy of Southwest Florida and our 6,000 supporters, very glad to be here this morning. I am the Director of Natural Resource Policy for the organization and normally handle state and federal policy matters, including water policy. I wanted to be here today personally. Our staff has sent you a letter already, and we wanted to personally be here to support and commend your staff for what they've done in preparing letters on the subject of the Charlotte County revisions to the mineral resource extraction, future land use designations. We believe those letters are excellent on the subject, and we're here to let you know that we concur with their content and intend to echo those concerns in letters that we are preparing to the state as well. We agree that the amendment, as it's currently being proposed, would weaken protections for Shell and Prairie Creeks. These existing policies in the comp plan are vitally important for protecting water quality and quantity of water in these creeks and in the Shell Creek Reservoir, which, as you know, is the sole source of potable water for Punta Gorda. We believe it's certainly reasonable that there be public hearings and that there be a requirement that applicants have to demonstrate that any activities within this watershed do not negatively affect these water resources. And therefore, we're respectfully requesting that you today approve the transmittal of these letters and offer your support for your efforts to prevent any policy changes which weaken protections for water resources in Punta Gorda or in Charlotte County. I look forward to working with you. I'm going to actually be heading up a new satellite office here in Punta Gorda for our organization. office here in Punta Gorda for our organization, so hope to be a resource to you all as you move forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak on any of these items?
Hi, good morning, I'm Deborah Highsmith, and I'm speaking as Conservation Chair of the Greater Charlotte Harbor Sierra Group. I'm speaking on regular agenda item 6D, the Mineral Resource Extraction Proposed Amendment to the Charlotte County Comp Plan. I also want to commend you on some fabulous letters that you are drafting and proposing. You have, you have a great legal and planning team here. Two things I want to say specifically. Number one, regarding your letter to the DEO, please know that I'm a little bit ahead of you in challenging other comprehensive plan amendments for Charlotte County. DEO feels like they can only comment on a very, very narrow scope of issues, state resources of critical concern, for example, and there's a specific list of that. So my point in telling you this is to be sure that you also write that identical letter to the agencies, the FDEP and SWF MUD. Don't leave them out of this process, because they are the only ones that can comment on environmental issues, not DEO. And just a clarification on a second issue, Charlotte County has recently, last year, finished two and a half years of revisions to their excavation and earthmoving ordinance. That is a done deal, it's adopted, and I was at the table representing the Sierra Club, as well as the Conservancy of Southwest Florida was there. Within that ordinance, there is all kinds of stuff that has been weakened. We fought for it, we didn't get it. Miners can dig deeper, they can dig wider, luckily, they can't dig longer. Exemptions for agricultural uses are much bigger. So anyway, down inside the ordinance, take a look at that, because you're going to be surprised, they can do stuff within your half-mile buffer that you might not realize they can do because of that ordinance. So, that's it. Good luck, thank you. We support you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak on any of these items? All right, we will move forward then, and we will begin with our CMR agreement with Wharton Smith for construction of our Brackish Reverse Osmosis Water Treatment Plant.
As our procurement manager comes up, we sent Tom Icard from Icard Merrill a copy of our prototype construction manager contract that we've used in the past. We've done three projects, Harold Court Center, Fire Station 2, and Lashley Park, under the construction manager at risk. It's worked out very well. Tom Icard did a complete rewrite, pretty much.
Pretty much.
Yep.
Legalized it.
And what I'd like to do is just have our procurement manager just highlight a few things, and there's one item that we disagreed with, we just don't think it's appropriate, and I'll tell you why later.
Good morning, for the record, Marion Pace, procurement manager. Staff finalized negotiations with Wharton Smith, Clyde Burgess, he was, Wharton Smith was really great to negotiate with, and we feel that we came back with a very good contract as far as putting stops on certain types of expenses in the, that will be developed in the guaranteed maximum price related to time, so we'll be able to measure that and have a not-to-exceed. So, we did that on the parking garage, but we expanded on it a little bit more in this contract. Mr. Icard reviewed, like Howard said, reviewed the agreement that was previously prepared for procurement a while back, and there's one area with the performance guarantee that staff did not agree with. It was very hard to measure, it would be very, very costly. As you can see, I gave you a little bit of estimates that Wharton Smith prepared for us. So what they will provide as far as a guarantee is at the completion of the construction, they will prove that in writing that the RO plant is operating per Tetra Tech's performance specifications. So they will guarantee that in writing, that is, when the construction's done, it is good. When we are evaluating or negotiating the guaranteed maximum price, at that time, council can direct us whether we want to negotiate in a maintenance warranty bond or a performance guarantee bond. They're very expensive, but we will have that right, and we can do that further down the road when the time is more appropriate. At this time, we're asking you to approve the agreement in Phase 1, which is the preconstruction, where they will work with the Tetra Tech and the city in value engineering the project, and that is at a lump sum cost of $75,000.
Yes, Howard.
I want to alert everybody's attention that when we approve this contract, we will be authorizing the construction manager to work with the design engineer to start the final design. We have a $900,000 state grant to do the final design, and we would like to get started on that. We don't have to have it done by September 30th, as long as the state sees we're making progress, we're fine. Word of caution, we're going to be designing a facility without a permit. We're still going through the wellfield testing, and that'll take another year, year and a half. I mean, Tetra Tech feels confident that, in discussions that we've already had with SWF MUD, that, you know, we're talking about an RO groundwater facility. They've been around forever. This is not a new technology. So, they feel good that when the time comes for SWF MUD to issue a permit, that we will have shown enough information to get at least the four MGD permits. So, we've made a commitment to get this project going, and right now, we're ready to enter the next phase concurrent with the wellfield testing.
Okay, yes, Rachel.
My questions for Howard along that line were, as long as the permit isn't going to affect the design in any way, then I'm okay with that, and he assured me that it wouldn't. And, you know, we're pursuing this to solve our multiple problems, so for them not to issue us a permit, I think would go against what, you know, the basis for the whole project is to solve problems. So, I just wondered about the CMAR contract, maybe David could speak to it a little bit. Is it more complicated because this is an operational plant? Like, the parking garage was just a structure, it didn't, so does that complicate it more, or you feel everybody's comfortable with what we have now?
I, Tom Icard is awesome when it comes to these types of complex projects and contracts that are necessary to protect our interests. Because of all the moving parts that were involved in this, because of the cost of the project overall, and who's going to be responsible for what, I asked Tom to be involved in reviewing what we had, and he assured me it was necessary to do the rewrite that he did, and so I'm confident that we've got a very good contract that can protect our interests. I was fairly confident with respect to what we did regarding the parking garage, but there are so many other, more opportunities for legal involvement with a project of this scope, so I think he did a good job. I stayed out of the process as much as I could because there are so many nuances with respect to this type of a contract that were beyond my area of expertise. I do want to point out that, Marion, I received a revised addendum regarding the project neutral.
Yes, that's what I was going to say.
We'd like to make that part of the contract that's being approved.
Yes, council members and mayor, you should have received the addendum.
It's in your...
Mailbox?
No, it's in your packet of originals.
And what this is, is the project neutral is a form of a dispute policy, and Mr. Icard recommended, and along with Wharton Smith's attorney, that we establish and identify the project neutral, who will be that person up front. And so the addendum in here is signed by the project neutral, it'll be signed by Tetra Tech, because they would be party to any type of dispute, the city and then Wharton Smith. So this addendum is basically establishing who the project neutral is and at their hourly rate.
Questions, Tom?
Is this replacing the mediation process that's already in the contract?
No, this, that is what's in the contract, that is the process. This is just identifying who that project neutral is, and that he agrees to do it.
They wanted upfront who the individual was going to be in case we ever get to a dispute.
It's already identified, the person's already identified.
It's already identified with their hourly rate. It's a significant hourly rate, but I guess that's what they get paid.
That's cheap in under court.
Any other questions? No.
Marion, I had just a couple of questions. Talk about an adjusted hourly rate and a labor burden, can you clarify those?
Okay, when we went out for the RFP, I asked for everyone to provide their hourly rate that they pay their project manager, superintendent foreman, and scheduler, and when you're putting a contract together, they add a labor burden rate, it's a standard calculator that adds in the fringe benefits and taxes and all that kind of stuff. So that percentage that comes up, you add that to the hourly rate, and that's how we established the adjusted hourly rate.
That's fine, thank you, thank you. This is an amazing contract, what was it, 90 pages? I mean, this is, this is amazing. I mean, you talk about the detail, I don't, if we've missed something, I could not find it at all. Any other comments, Tom?
Just wanted to clarify, this kickoff is a kickoff for the entire project, not just the Phase 1 portion of the project.
We're beginning design.
Yeah. But the contract is for the entire project.
The entire project.
I have a couple of questions on that when we can get to it.
Well, I think now's the time.
Well, these are, all right, these are kind of specific to the contract, and I'm sure that, has there a timeframe been established for the approval of the contract documents once they've been submitted for approval? Can, for instance, an agency take, you know, a month or two months, or has that been established? When you pass on documents for an approval from the engineer or from some other appropriate agency, has a timeframe been established for how long that process would take?
I believe it is 15 days.
I think that was in there. I think that was in there.
Okay, and there was a question I had about, there's a difference between a 30 and a 35% savings on value engineering-related items, the...
Get to the reduction of the project.
Yeah, the 35% sharing seemed to is under age reduction of project cost, under cost of project. I just wanted to get a clarification on that.
Okay, here we go. Okay, the incentives, this is basically the guidelines that we've...
844.
We followed with the parking garage, as far as cost in the project. In the GMP, a share of 35%, so if the guaranteed maximum price is here and they come in last, then we would give them as an incentive 35% of that share.
And that's fine, I just wanted to clarify that that's 35% as opposed to 30%. 30% was referenced someplace.
And 30% where that is, that should be in the, oh, where is that at?
Is that the value engineering?
No, there is no value engineering, because that's what we're paying them to do as a value engineer. It's our general condition services fee, that's the, that'll be the budget that's related to time, anything that's related to time. So if they come in under that budget or before the completion time, there will be a share in savings. There are some components that we restricted and will not allow a share of.
Okay, that's fine. And I also understand there are liquidated damages for, if they don't come in when they're supposed to come in.
Mm-hmm.
So that compensation will be their bonus for coming in under the timeframe?
Yes.
The sharing, okay, that's fine. And so the county is going to be involved in the permitting process?
Correct.
Could you, to what extent will the county be involved in permitting? I'm not...
They're going to be involved as far as any structural permitting, there'll be the jurisdiction that governs the building permit process, electrical permits, and like we would do here in a construction project.
But as far as the internals of the project, the pumps and all of the internals, they are not going to be involved in that approval process?
Just as far as the electric, approving the electrical inspections.
Who is our city representative on the job site?
That'll be Steve Leonard at utilities, he's awesome project manager.
Any other questions?
I thought it was a very thorough document, it was well done.
That's great.
Yes.
I just had a couple of additional comments. First, Tom expressed to me, and I'm going to share with you, his compliments with respect to...
Tom?
Tom Icard.
Okay.
The attorney, Marion's efforts on behalf of the city and how knowledgeable she was in helping him prepare this document, and also, the comment was made regarding the hourly rate for the project neutral. I believe that's at least as much as what Tom Icard's hourly rate is, but he agreed to perform his services on behalf of the city for the same hourly rate that I'm paid, which is $165 an hour, so.
Thank him for us.
I thanked him a lot for doing that.
Hopefully we don't get there, right?
Pardon?
Hopefully we don't get there.
Yes.
Well, no, that's what he already has invested in.
Well, hopefully we don't need it.
Hopefully we won't need it, that's correct.
Please express our thanks to them.
Yes.
That's wonderful.
Thank you. This again is, was an amazing contract and an effort, obviously, from our staff, as well as Mr. Icard and as well as David, so appreciate it, appreciate it, everyone. But this is our stepping off point. We are stepping off into a massive project, and, but it's going to be all good.
Very exciting.
Do we have a motion?
Move approval of the Phase 1 preconstruction services?
Including the...
And the contract?
Including the addendum.
And the addendum.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the CMAR agreement with Wharton Smith for construction of our RO plant with the addendum. It's been seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Yes, sir.
So I, with that, we will issue a notice to proceed to Tetra Tech for the design phase.
Thank you.
Right? Let's get going.
Awesome. We're ready. We're ready.
Get to work.
Chuck Drake is here as well. Chuck, do you want, pardon?
And Danny.
Oh, and Danny.
And Clyde.
And Clyde, welcome, welcome, yes. And Tom. Thank you all, did you want to say anything?
Thank you.
Okay. We're ready, all right, thank you.
Just real quick, and Marion and Dave are going to pass out, because I don't, I don't hand out compliments for people just doing their job well, but Marion did a amazing, this was like writing War and Peace by committee, and she got it done, and this is important, and it's important that we got it right, and I think we did.
I think we did too.
And returning it in for best practice.
There you go. Very good, thank you. Thank you all, thank you very much. We're looking forward to pushing this project along. We're now on 6B, Award of Amendment Number 15, Design Engineering Services for US 41 Southbound Underpass.
Yes, we went back to Wyler Engineering, who was the design engineer for the Harbor Walk. We negotiated a contract. Now, the base bid, or the base contract, does not include, as it will if there's an add-on, permitting with the Department of Homeland Security and the Army Corps of Engineers. We're hoping to avoid them. By going the land-oriented route, Mike Chardello, could you kind of get up there?
Don't be shy.
Explain your ideas first, even though you haven't done the boundary survey, we know, but your ideas on how we think we can get this accomplished without dealing with those agencies.
Absolutely. For the record, Mike Chardello with Wyler Engineering. The first step in the process, like Howard said, would be to do the survey. Once we do the survey, we'll establish where the mean high water line is. It's the desire of the city, I believe, to eliminate the 90-degree turn. It's the desire of the city, I believe, to eliminate the 90-degree turn, and the way you would do that on the interior side of the turn would be to add a seawall at a 45-degree angle. If that seawall lies in a position where we would be doing work on the water side of the mean-high water line, we would be kicking in Army Corps requirements, and we would need a permit from them. If we can do all of our work completely on the upland side of the mean-high water line, then we don't have to go through the Army Corps. So that first item that's in the contract as an additional is basically based off of whether or not the survey tells us we need to put the seawall in the water or not. Now, my plan is to meet with the city around the 30% phase, when we would already have the survey in hand, and also a concept layout, and we can look at options, you know, because if we can move it back two feet, you know, maybe we can live with that and save, you know, some of the time and some of the expense. But if, no matter what we do, we're in the water, then we can make the decision with, you know, city staff at that, at that point. The other one is permitting through agencies, not including Army Corps, SWIFTMUD, or DOT. When we discussed this with the staff, we didn't want to go to the DOT or any of these agencies and say, are you guys going to coordinate with the Department of, you know, whoever, whatever security, federal security agencies that might be concerned about doing work underneath the bridge? So, you know, we didn't do that for the reason that we didn't want them to come back and say, oh, yeah, that's probably a good idea, we should, we should, we should contact all these people and see, you know, who might care. So, you know, our plan will be to submit, you know, to the DOT and then see where it goes from there. If they do, you know, have us do some extra coordination, then we added a little bit of additional for some hourly to do whatever might be required in order to do that additional coordination or permitting. Now, I did talk with a number of people at the DOT, the local Fort Myers Operations Office, who would be doing the actual construction agreement for the project, the Structures Office, who would be reviewing from a structural standpoint, from actually cutting into the bridge abutment, and also the environmental folks. So I talked to everybody, and in every conversation I had, I said, are there any other agencies besides the DOT that you know of that we would have to get a permit from or that you would coordinate through in the process? And other than, again, SWIFTMUD and Army Corps, nobody said any other agencies. So we're confident that there won't be any other agencies, but, you know, like I said, there, as we go down the process and they start getting, you know, just plans to review and things, you know, somebody along the line might say, you know what, we need to go ahead and have a federal agency look at this.
Yes, Rachel.
Okay, so your additional hourly that you were talking about, do you think you would know at the 30% phase whether or not that's going to happen, or when do you think you'll get the indication of, or does it all depend on this 45-90 seawall situation?
I believe the permitting assistance through the Army Corps, the addition number one that's on there, we will be able to, at the 30% phase, make, you know, the determination with city staff of whether or not we're getting into the water.
So that would trigger the Army Corps?
Correct.
And the other would, the other homeland security would trigger from DOT, probably?
Right, and I don't, I don't imagine, you know, the DOT will probably start reviewing the plans around the 60% phase, so it'll probably be after the 60% phase when we would have a better idea. I mean, I guess up until the permit is written by the DOT, which is, you know, towards the completion of the project, you know, they could interject another agency up until that point. But I think we would probably have a better idea somewhere a little bit after the 60% mark, once we've actually submitted plans to the DOT and received comments back.
And it's not spelled out in here, but I certainly would hope that the city council would see the 60% and at least have some kind of, you know, conversation about how we are going to address that 45-90 issue, because I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, but the total project of 240,000 would not include any seawall at this point.
Howard, do you want to respond to that?
We intend to bring back the 30% concept plan to the city council, not 60%.
You didn't tell me that yesterday. Okay, I like that.
30.
Nice, okay.
Absolutely. I'm happy to present to the board at any time.
And, good. And the 240,000, would that include any seawall? Or would that...
We will, I mean, we're talking a very small section of seawall. You know, as we, as we refine the design, you know, we'll have a better idea of exactly what the expenses will be, but we'll do what we can to, you know, try to get the project under that 200, and if it's an issue of money, we can, you know, we can put the seawall in, but it's going to be this much more, then obviously, that's a decision we would take back to you.
Okay.
Other questions, comments?
Just a question. This is not, this is not going to interfere with the, this, the project that we're getting grant funding for, we can move ahead with this project independent, and that, I just wanted to...
Okay. Anything else? We need to move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the Award of Amendment Number 15, Design Engineering Services to Wyler Engineering Corporation. It's been moved and seconded, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mike, stay up there.
We are now going to succeed review of design options for Harbor Walk West Seawall.
Can you put on the Elmo, alternative option one?
You want me to do? You got it?
We were asked to go back and look at options that the state would approve to avoid a handrail. Option one is, been approved by FDOT. We don't need a handrail. You have a two-foot cap, five-foot median grass that kind of, if you look, if you went out there now, you saw a median there now. I think it's even maybe more than five feet now, but it varies. It varies. So that's, so there's a median there now, and then you have a 20-foot Harbor Walk. Now, the original design concept took that 20-foot Harbor Walk and put it flush. So what we've now done is, with the five-foot median, we've kind of pushed the Harbor Walk five foot more into the park area. Just want to bring everybody's attention to see if we're still comfortable with that. What we are comfortable with is that we can accomplish this task without handrails, and if you approve that option, we can turn Wyler Engineering on to get the bid specs for the area between the gazebo and the bayfront, get that out to bid, under contract, under construction, and out of there before the federal grant funds take hold. There is an option two. Our urban design folks are creative people. That's what they do. They, they, they're creative.
Would you like to draw pictures?
They, they've come up with an option regarding a seating wall that separates the grass area with the Harbor Walk. It's a 1.6-foot cap along with a 1.3-inch seating wall. That, we have not heard back from FDOT as to whether or not that would require any handrails or not. That's just an option, or obviously, the first option is the one that we can get moving on right away. So it's just out there for your consideration. So, that's where we are.
Okay, I, just to maybe start off the discussion, I prefer the first one, and primarily because we'll have people probably turning around or sitting either way on those benches, and perhaps even looking at 20 feet. I was looking at 20 feet in this room. Do you realize how big, how long 20 feet would be? Plus five feet, that's 25 feet of space. I would think we could pull that back to 15 feet and then have benches on the other side of the pathway. Yes, Nancy?
I'm going to have to arm wrestle you with that one, because I was a part of the Team Punta Gorda waterfront committee when we made the original recommendation to actually start this whole Harbor Walk process, which is, and, and the recommendation then was for a 30-foot promenade, and it was to make it a promenade, and it's been reduced from 30 down to 20. I get emails about people in the conflict of pedestrians and the cyclists, and I think this is going to be a very heavily-used area, and I think we need the width.
Even with, even with the grass?
Yes.
Even with the additional grass?
Yes. Because it's, it's, the, it's, the grass is not an area that is going to be used by the pedestrians or the cyclists, or whatever else people will be on, and, and we need that. And I know that the other Harbor Walk is, what, 12 feet, I think, on the east side?
Varies from 10 to 12.
We really wanted it wider, and so I...
Where should we arm wrestle now?
Yeah.
Yes, Kim.
What, what is the width of the sidewalk behind the Bayfront Center now?
The one that's, that we constructed as part of the Harbor Walk?
Yeah.
That one's 15 feet. There's actually, if you notice, there's a jog, I think it goes 18 to 15 right behind the Bayfront Center.
I guess I'm wondering, how are we going to transition all this? I mean, I agree with Nancy, it's busy out there. I am on that pathway all the time, and there are people with bikes, and there are people with trikes, and there are people with strollers and roller blades and walkers, and, and I will tell you, just this past weekend, it was just packed out there. And I know it's season, but we do have a retirement community, and, I mean, one lady fell off her bike just trying to get around what was going on, so, again, a safety, but I guess I'm trying to visualize how this is going to work. I like the 30 feet, but now we're going to come from, well, I don't know, is it 30 feet behind?
It's 20 feet.
Okay, so it's 20 feet behind, no, I'm talking about where, where the gazebos are. Is it 20 feet there?
I mean, the gazebo itself needs to be offset from the path by a little ways, but the actual...